They took away my napkin.
You're lying. Go ahead.
All right. This is the meeting of the Township of Presipony Troy Hills Planning Board, Monday, April 18th, at 20:22, 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it is being conducted in accordance with NJ SA 10:4-6 at Sec. of the New Jersey Public, uh, Open Public Meetings Act. If you'll call the roll, please.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Here.
Mr. Math.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Ms. Veely.
Here.
Mr. Von Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
Here.
We also have with us our board planner, Mr. Behrens, our board engineer, Mr. Canziano, and our board attorney, Mr. Logana.
All right, if we could stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First question I'd like to ask is if there's anybody in the general public that would like to speak to us on something that is not on our agenda tonight. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to the resolutions. We have before us a resolution for ADP. Does somebody wish to move this resolution?
Chairman?
Yes?
Motion to approve application number 21:529, ADP Incorporated, 99 Jefferson Road Block, 736 Lot 7.4, preliminary and final major site plan for construction of solar carports.
Thank you, Mr. Napolitano. Do I hear a second?
Second, Meth.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
Napolitano.
Yes.
Stansiel.
Yes.
Veely.
Yes.
Von Aiken.
Yes.
Dinsmore.
Yes.
All right, moving on to the next item in our agenda, which is application number 22. Dot 506, Fire District 5, 180 Old Bloomfield Avenue, Block 626, Lot 21.1, preliminary and final major site plan, C variants. This is a courtesy review. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name's Jim Brayson.
Into the mic though, please. Sitting is fine. We don't require standing here.
Thanks. Sorry about that, Chairman.
Even if you have standing.
My name's Jim Brayson from the law firm Murphy McKeon, appearing tonight on behalf of the applicant, which is actually the Board of Fire Commissioners for District 5. Tonight before the board is an application courtesy review for preliminary and final site plan approval and variance relief. I will certainly be relying upon the testimony of three witnesses tonight, but I can just tell you the thumbnail sketch, the applicant is seeking to demolish a pre-existing fire station that exists on the site and replace that with a new one. That's two stories, and it will require certain variance relief, especially as to impervious coverage. It is going to go up a little bit. There is also going to be some, uh, oh, book, um, setback relief as well. It's improving, but it's still there. The pre-existing violation is a little bit greater than what we're proposing, so it's going to be reduced, but it's there anyway. So with that being said, I do have three witnesses tonight. I think it would be beneficial to introduce, without further questions, the board at this point, Mr. Lambert, who's actually a commissioner, and to tell you why they're actually here and why they need a new firehouse.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening, sir. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Name for the record, please?
Kevin Lambert, Board of Fire Commissioners, Fire District Number 5.
Please spell your last name?
L.A.M.B.E.R.T.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lambert, thank you for being here tonight. I know that you indicated that you're part of the Board of Fire Commissioners. How long have you been in that position?
About 20 years.
I understand from the audience that they're having difficulty hearing. Oh, okay. Get a little bit closer.
Is that too-
Better? I apologize. Okay. So you've been in that position for approximately 20 years?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you're familiar with the site and the current firehouse, correct?
Yes, sir.
How long has that firehouse been on the property?
Uh, there's been a firehouse there since like 1930, the original station, this station that's currently there was built in 1983.
Okay. So during that time, has there been issues structurally with that firehouse?
Unfortunately, a lot of fill was brought in. The original fire station was a little closer to the road. Uh, the, the fire station that was designed there in 83 was actually pushed back on the property, and there was a substantial amount of fill brought into the site. And we've had significant problems with, uh, the bays settling, the rear wall is kind of pitching out at this point. So a lot of cracking and stuff in the building on the structure itself. So, uh, we were trying to gain some extra space, but unfortunately, due to the soil conditions there on the site, uh, going up, you know, wasn't, it wasn't an option. And because of the limited size of the property, you know, there's really no good place to go, so.
Okay.
Kind of what facilitated where we're at now.
Okay, and even going up would not be structurally appropriate?
No, no.
And are you concerned with the also structural integrity based upon the amount of weight that is currently housed within the firehouse?
Trucks get bigger and smaller, unfortunately, so we've had to do some substantial repairs to the bay area, cracking floors and things like that, so over time.
Correct. And that's all I really have for you, unless you believe that there's something more that the board should be aware of?
Don't think so. If anybody has any questions.
If you'd speak up.
If anybody has any questions, I can answer them. I think we've kind of covered it.
Members of the board have questions of those witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Right now, are there members of the public who have any questions of this witness on this testimony at this time? Hearing and, oh, if you have a question, please come up and speak into the microphone, give your name and address.
I have something to say. I guess you're going to have more people speaking up here.
Yes.
Wait till the end?
Absolutely.
That's fine.
You will have an absolute right to be heard at the end. All right. Counselor?
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. The next witness that I'd like to call is Carolyn Fagan. Fagan, excuse me, I'm sorry. I have to be there.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give? It would be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you out?
I do.
Name, and spell your last for the record, please.
Carolyn Fagan, F as in Frank, E.I.G.I.N. I'm with the firm of A.R.H. Associates.
Counsel, if you qualify the witness, please.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Fagan, for the benefit of the board and the public, can you please tell us what your educational background is?
Sure. I graduated from NJIT with a bachelor's in civil engineering in 1994. I've been doing land development since then, so 20-something years. I got my New Jersey Professional Engineers license in 2000, and I also have a planner's license in New Jersey since 2018. And I've been doing site plans and subdivisions and testimony before many boards for about 20 years, and I've actually been in front of the zoning board during COVID, um, for a mountain club.
At this point, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move the witness in as both a professional engineer and engineer.
Any questions of the witnesses?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I think she's going to be providing testimony as in planning capacity as well?
Just briefly.
Okay, if, if, uh, just keep those separate for a clean record. Any questions of the board regarding the engineering, perhaps we should handle those first. I think that's where the bulk of it's going to come, and just to keep the record organized.
That's fine.
Thank you.
And I'll make it clear when we're going to-
Yes. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fagan, thank you very much. Before we start with the actual site, can you tell us what the general scope of the assignment was?
Sure. As you indicated, the fire company is in need of a new firehouse, and because they're not able to put a second story on the building, that's not structurally sound, we had to come up with a plan to design a new building on this lot, which is 0.7 acres. It's rather small, but came up with a two-story building that will satisfy the needs at a fourth bay. Right now, they only have three bays. And it'll be a new state-of-the-art facility that'll satisfy the needs of the fire company now and in years to come. One of the tasks was also trying to provide parking, some additional parking on-site, and we accomplished that, as can be seen on the site plan. I can go into that in greater detail. That was in essence the project.
Yeah, that's fine. If you could just briefly tell the board what's pre-existing and then what is proposed-
Okay.
-from a physical perspective.
Okay, um, the building currently is set a little bit further back on the property to the north.
You're pointing to a document-
Yes.
-that's clearly from the submitted plans?
That's correct. If you want to mark this as an exhibit, it's Sheet 3 of 8.
Just tell us which sheet it is.
Sure. It's Sheet 3 of 8 in the set of plans from A.R.H. Associates. It's called the site plan. So currently, which is shown on Sheet 2, the building is set a little bit further to the north on the lot. Again, as we just heard about the fill that's in the rear of the site, we're bringing the building closer to the front or closer to Old Bloomfield Avenue. In order to do that, we had to move the parking area that was only accessed from Old Bloomfield Avenue. Currently, the only access to parking in the bays is on Old Bloomfield, and there's no access on Downey Court. With the new proposal, we'll be having some parking access from Downey Court. There's a six-space parking lot here, and 10 spaces will be accessed directly from Downey, reducing Old Bloomfield Avenue to only access to the bays and two small lots in the front that will have a drive aisle. This improves the stalls that are facing Bloomfield Avenue right here, which need to basically back out right now to get onto this main road, so that improves that by moving them to Downey Court.
What is the overall size of the proposed building?
The proposed building has a 7,158 square foot first floor. That includes this roof area that's over the front of Vestibule. There is a second level as well. I think the architecturals indicated as 68, yeah, 6837 first floor, 3498 second floor, for a total of 10,335 square feet of floor area.
Okay, and before, and you've heard me introduce this issue to the board, there are some nonconformities.
Yes.
Could you just detail those for the board?
Sure. There are three variances that we're requesting tonight. One is for front setback from Downey Court. 40 feet is required. This is a corner lot, so unfortunately, it does have two front setbacks. Currently, the building is at 32.5 feet from Downey Court, which is an existing nonconforming condition. We're going to be moving it a few feet to the east, and the new setback will be 36 feet, where 40 is required. The other two involve coverage. One is a building coverage and one is a lot coverage. Permitted for this zone is 15% building coverage. This is only going to be changing by .1%, and I'll give you the exact number. Right now, it is 23.7%. It's increasing to 23.8%, where 15% is permitted. The lot coverage, which is the overall lot, including the parking, the sidewalks, and all of the drive aisles, is going from 55.3%, which is an existing nonconforming condition, to 64.4% of the lot. And this is in order to provide the proper drive aisles and areas for the cars to back out into the drive aisles as best as possible.
Okay, now with that increase of lot coverage, as indicated, has your engineering plan taken into consideration its impact as to drainage and other type of stormwater management concerns?
Yes, we've added some drainage facilities. There, there was an inlet on-site, or there is an inlet on-site. We're going to be adding a few stormwater inlets to direct the runoff into an inlet and pipe conveyance system. That will be tied into an existing system that's on Downey Court, and that heads down Downey. The topo, the topography actually heads right down Downey Court in that direction.
Now, I do notice that there are some adjoining property owners here tonight that have always, I think, been concerned with drainage onto their property from what I would consider to be the rear yard. Does this plan address some of that drainage concern?
Yes, it does. The building is moving closer to the street, but now we've added this parking in the back. Now that we're putting the parking back here, all of this runoff will be contained and collected in this inlet, which will be piped, so there'll be less runoff that's able to head to the north, which my understanding is one of the concerns of the adjacent property owner. On this side, pretty much be the same amount, and that's heading to wetlands, so we can't disturb any of this area here. In addition, we'll be putting some plantings along the entire rear of the, of the development to help with the buffer.
Okay, and I believe that the applicant's happy to work with any of the boards and townships professionals as to the appropriate buffering and species that we use?
Yes, that's correct. One of the letters speaks about some of the species and providing light details and whatnot. We'll obviously agree to do all of those and meet all the conditions of all the professionals.
Okay, so as to site lighting, any type of proposed site lighting that's reflected in our plans will have the downward shielding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Will have low intensity?
Yes. Right now, what we show are a few building-mounted lights and a few pole-mounted lights, as well as one bollard up in the front. We'll provide the specs on those, and they'll meet the ordinance requirements, as well as be shielded with the house side to not allow any spillage past the property line.
Okay, and in your plan, did you also consider ADA compliance issues?
Yes, we are increasing the ADA parking stalls. Currently, there's one, and we'll now have two, although one is still required with the number of stalls we have. I didn't mention yet that there are 19 on-site parking stalls at the current site, and we'll be increasing that to 24 stalls to get five more off-street parking spaces within the lot, so that'll help with any parking that's up and down the street a little bit there.
Okay, now looking at this plan, especially as related to parking, as to what's related on-site that's currently there, is this a better plan?
I definitely think it's a better plan, as we've removed all of the stalls that abut Old Bloomfield Avenue, and there's nobody that will be backing directly out onto Old Bloomfield Avenue. The four, the two banks of four stalls here have a little bit of a drive aisle to back out into before they exit onto Old Bloomfield Avenue. Where we do have the 10 stalls on Downey Court, this is a less-traveled road, and we'd be able to, you know, a car could back out of there more safely than it could on Old Bloomfield. And the bank back here, of course, has the drive aisle, which allows maneuvering without going into the public right away.
Okay, and as compared to the old plan, this actually does not require motor vehicles to park by going through the emergency ramp, correct?
I'm sorry, that emergency ramp?
Yeah, on the old- where the trucks are.
Oh, okay, no, yeah, the bays.
Yes. I thought it was the emergency ramp.
Yes, sorry, oh, yes, that's correct. So the bays here are kept clear. These are free and clear. There's a curb here that will not allow anybody to, any regular vehicles to come into the area where the bays are for the fire trucks.
I think my point was just the old plan had that.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I just parked there tonight, and it's pretty much a free-for-all there. You could park in front of the bays, so you won't be able to do, well, I'm not saying somebody couldn't just drive in and do it, but they shouldn't, because there's plenty of parking around, and, and this is separate.
That's fine. This property is serviced by public water and sewer?
Yes, there's public sewer and water to the building now. Those will be temporarily capped, disconnected, and reconnected when the new building is up and running.
Okay, and you also did provide ample space for solid waste removal, correct?
Yes, this plan actually adds a trash enclosure at the back of the six-bay parking area, sixth lot parking area, which will be accessed off Downey Court. We'll also have an emergency generator at the rear of the building. That maintains all proper setbacks as well.
Okay. That really is a lot of my engineering testimony. I just want to do ask you a few planning questions.
We could keep that separate. I'd like the questions from any of the members of the board on engineering to come first and separate the planning part.
That's fine, Chairman. At this point, I think I conclude with all of my engineering site plan questions, unless there's something that you have to add that I may have forgotten.
Look at my notes, but I think that covers them all. Parking, landscaping, lighting, gas generators, stormwater, trash enclosure, sewer and water, and site lighting. Oh, I did want to mention one other thing. There's an existing site identification sign out here at the corner. That will be moved a little bit further away from the intersection. It's not in the site triangle now, but it'll be moved a little bit further away, so that should help with any visibility at the corner as well. So the new location is shown there, and the site triangle is provided as well. It is outside of it.
Okay, maybe I should ask this at this point in time. You did have the opportunity to review the, the township engineers' review memorandum?
Yes, I did.
In reviewing that memorandum and just trying to be very clear, is there any type of objection to any of the comments or recommendations that were made by the board engineer that you'd see a problem with compliance?
No, we can provide the details. What, I know there's one comment to check on the clearance or to ensure that there's no conflict between utilities. We'll do that. And that's about it. We did add the two variances that were mentioned, put them on the record for the three variances. Everything else, we agreed to meet.
And, Mr. Chairman, now, I think I may be done with my questions.
All right, now, are there any questions of the board of the engineer on her testimony at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if nobody else wants to go, I have a few questions.
Mr. Math?
Hi.
Hi. A few quick questions. I guess you're increasing impervious coverage by about 3,000 square feet, I can see, right?
It's 9.1% when, yes, I do have the numbers, so let me just be accurate on the difference. Yes, it is about 9,000 square feet.
Right, and actually, just a question for our attorney. This is a courtesy review, so we're going to approve this. We just make recommendations, correct?
That's correct.
I, I understand you're not a major project and don't have to do anything.
Right.
But how would you feel about adding a seepage pit for, say, the roof leader from the building to try to cut, I don't know what the soils are like, but if there's any way to cut down on the amount of stormwater, given that you're almost double the coverage allowance in the zone?
Um, I mean, I guess I can discuss that with the client, but-
More than double, actually.
Right now, the roof runoff does go through a pipe system. It goes, it's doing what it's doing, going to continue to do, I think. My understanding is it goes underground into a pipe system. We intend to continue that, and it'll tie in, and, like, it won't be overland runoff that's going to be on the site and running off of the property. It's going to be through a pipe conveyance system.
I only, I only suggested the roof leaders because that water's clean.
Yes, it is, absolutely.
As opposed to dirt. So if you're going to put something in the ground, I'd prefer it to be clean, that's all. So you have to treat it.
It's not going in the ground to be recharged. It's going into solid conveyance pipe, right?
Understood.
Yeah, so I just want to be clear. I'm not trying to say we're creating a dry well. It's not right now, so I guess I can discuss with the commissioners if they want to, you know, include a dry well. Again, we're not really required to because it's not major development, so it's not an increase of the quantity.
I understand there's no requirement. It's strictly just a, like, a request or recommendation. The separation between the parking lot and where the driveways are for the fire trucks, am I correct that that's just a piece of Belgium block curb with wheel stops in front of it?
That's correct. It's Belgium block curb and, and wheel stops. That's right.
You wouldn't consider making a small island there, even if you gotta make the parking stalls a little narrower, a little tighter? I, it just, to me, that seems like a trip hazard.
I mean, I don't want to take any room away from these trucks being able to maneuver in here. I guess the only way to, I don't want to make these stalls any narrower either. They have a requirement for a minimum size. I, I guess this could potentially move over this way a little bit in order to get a small island in here, you know, if we took the whole thing and just moved it over four feet or something.
Yeah, I mean, the, the truth is, I mean, if, if the stalls are probably 16 feet-
They're 18?
No, no, I, I know. What I'm saying is if they're a little narrower, I don't think it's the end of the world. I mean, you already have wheel stops. If you basically put a curb where the wheel stop is, that's no difference for a car. It's still going to overhang, right? That's just a suggestion. I guess another thing, the five-foot sidewalk in front of the other spaces?
Over here?
Yes, on the side. Could you make that six, just so that, to accommodate overhang?
Yes, that's an easy one.
And maybe a sidewalk connection to the public sidewalk in case when you have events in the, in the upper meeting room, if people could be dropped off on the curb instead of any walk-in?
Like coming out to here, you mean, or something like that?
Exactly.
I don't think that would be a problem, to do something in this area, come out of here and connect it there.
Those are all my suggestions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other members of the board have any questions on the engineering testimony at this time? Mr. Canziano?
No, I just wanted to add, um, comment to the ADA curb ramps. They just all have to be compliant all the way on Downing and Old Bloomfield Avenue.
Understood.
Along the frontage there.
Yes.
And it's always good, just for constructability, to have a, like, a 10-scale detail on your plans.
Sure, yep.
The ramps, the contractor knows how to-
Build them properly, yeah, understood.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can do a couple of big-scale details.
Yeah, that would be my, my main one. And you already mentioned that you've got to update the zoning table and look at-
Yes, yes, we will do that.
Address the other comments.
Yes.
All right, that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
Anything else from the board? Just Napolitano?
Sure.
Just making sure that people on, residents on Downey Court won't have any more water on the property in the basements. All that'll be taken care of.
That's correct. We're actually going to have a reduction in what's going in that direction, so there'll still be overland flow that goes down the hill here, but there's going to be less of it because we are now capturing some of it and getting it into a collection system.
Thank you.
All right.
You mentioned the existing freestanding sign-
Yes.
-is being relocated.
Yes.
Did you happen to know, I looked through the plans, to find the size of that, just for the record, so that when they come in for permits, we, we can, we remember what the size that was?
I'd scale this and give you an idea, but I would only know the width. I don't know the height, and I was just there and saw it, and I'm going to say it's, I don't know, maybe one of these guys knows the size, but, sorry, I didn't look at the height. I could give you the width, though.
But it's, it's existing, just relocate?
Yes, that's my understanding. We're just going to relocate it. I'll give you the width, though. Hang on a second. I have a scale here. I don't know if this is going to help when we get down to that point, but, okay, this is 1 equals 10, but it doesn't look like 1 equals 10? I'm not sure if these are plotted to scale, so maybe I actually can't give you the dimension. Let's say I don't think it's wider than eight feet. It's probably six feet wide or so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Other members of the board or professionals?
I just have a couple of questions.
Of the, of the engineer?
Actually, probably more towards counsel. Counsel, you agreed to comply with the questions in the engineering letter. We also have some correspondences from our fire protection subcode official dated February 7th, 2022. Do you have any issues with, with those recommendations and comments?
No, not at all. As a matter of fact, we're happy to comply with the fire officials. We will indicate that that, the drive aisle to the rear parking would be a fire lane. That's not a problem at all. The piping provisions as related to that is fine. We'll identify the location of the springer system when there's fire hydrant.
Yeah.
I think we're okay there.
Also, when it comes to the recommendations due by the water department and I even with the sewer department, I don't think that we have any objection to the recommendations that are made, even those we're developing.
Okay, so for the record, the sewer department correspondence was dated February 15th, 2022, and the water superintendent comments was dated March 22nd, 2022.
That is correct.
I have one question regarding the emergency generator. What kind of generator is it?
I don't know what kind of generator it is, so, I'm sorry. I know it's a gas, oh, I'm sorry, diesel, okay.
Diesel generator. Typical hours of testing?
I imagine it has to be exercised every so often like, like they do, and yes, it will meet all of the decibel requirements. It is located in the rear of the building, but as far away from the residential as possible.
Can we just ensure a work-time testing, so it's not done too early, not too late?
Sure, absolutely.
During the week at a-
Yes.
-reasonable time?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chairman.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming that the tank of diesel will be, will meet all of the town requirements for such storage?
I will say it absolutely will.
I would guess that would be correct.
Yes.
All right, any other members of the board? Do you have any questions of the engineer? Do you have any questions of the engineer?
Sure, I'll just offer two quick questions. And not to harp on this issue, but pertaining to the site distance question from our memo, you know, recognizing the signs already there. If the parking area nearest the corner is filled, you know, occupied with SUVs or any type of vehicle, does that still allow for safe, you know, motor vehicle maneuvers around the corner from a site distance perspective?
You're talking about if this lot is full right here in the front and then somebody has to park over here, you mean, or, I'm sorry?
Well, if either lot's full, but if someone's simply turning from Old Bloomfield on to Downey, I believe it is.
Yeah.
Or out of Downey onto Old Bloomfield.
Yeah, the site triangle from this space here, it doesn't even, I don't even believe that it clips the corner of the property in here, so we can plot that on there, though, and see. I know it was one of the comments about the site triangle at this intersection. If you could see, this line is the site triangle, and we just, like, project it over here, it's not going to, I don't even think it's going to clip the corner of any, of the site, let alone the parking, so. But we can plot that on there, so.
You answered most others. One final question. Will there be any outdoor storage of any type of materials or sheds or anything?
I want to say no, but I better just look at, okay, no.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any other members of the engineer at this time? Are there any members of the public questions of the engineer? If you could please come up and identify yourself and your address and ask the question of the engineer on this testimony?
Thank you. No book problems. Good evening, everybody. My name is Vincent Chindel, S-C-H-I-N-D-E-L. I'm the immediate neighbor of the firehouse. My property is just north of the firehouse. I get the biggest impact on anything that's being done.
Do you have a question of?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. I thought you wanted this information here.
We just wanted your name and your address.
Yes, my question is with the parking on Downey Court. If I'm, understand, if I understand correctly, there's going to be parking there for eight automobiles, is that it?
There's going to be 10 stalls that are directly accessed from Downey Court, and then there's a little parking lot at the back of the building for six more stalls.
Well, that's my problem. I'm going to have to look at a parking lot from my home if I'm sitting out on my deck with my family, having a barbecue on Sunday to see a parking lot in the back of the building.
Is this a question for the engineer? You could, you can make these comments later if you're going to testify that this is a problem.
Well, what do you, what can I say here?
You're asking questions of the engineer on her testimony at this time, and then later there'll be time for you to put in a statement and testify as to why this is good or bad or how it would affect you.
Okay, I think the water problem is a big problem for me. I'd like to ask the engineer that this is the third building that they've put up here since I'm living there in 39 years. Kenny attested to this. I agree with him. I want everybody here to know, I appreciate the volunteers and what they're doing, but the problem is, they started out here with a two-bay garage when I was living there, when I moved in. I went to a three-bay. Now it's going to a four-bay. And they want to build the new building because it's structurally unsafe or unsound. I want to know from the engineers what they're going to do to make it structurally sound.
Not the structural engineer, so.
What you're going to do different?
Yeah, I've put it on the record right now. I'm not an expert in structural engineering at all, but I know that there is a structural engineer working closely with the architect to design a structurally sound building. They've done soil testing out there to see what the material is for, so they understand all their bearing capacities, and the foundation will be designed to meet all codes. And certainly, I don't know what was built in 1980-something and what the codes look like then, but, you know, in 2022, there's a lot of, you know, design that goes into it before it can be approved, so.
Mr. Chairman, I can have my architect when he's called to address that point.
Okay, fine. I'm no rocket scientist. I think I have a lot of good sense here. I think they had the two buildings prior to this, and they had a problem, and now they're putting the third building up. They want to put a third building up. They keep doing the same thing over and over again and looking for different results. I'm concerned that if they put this building up, they're still going to have problems with the way the land is. They have wetlands right behind our property, the two properties. The Board of Ed is next door. They put a maintenance yard in there. I was told back in 1983.
Do you have a question here of the engineer?
Well, this is all engineering, I'm assuming.
But you're not asking a question, you're testifying, and you're not under oath?
I'm not under oath? Okay.
But you will get a chance.
All right. Like I say, my concern is for everybody's sake, not mine. I have nothing against the volunteer firemen. I'm all for them. They do a great service for the community. But I was misinformed, I'm going to be polite, when they built the other building, they told me they were going to have water running away from my property. It wouldn't flow into my property. It wasn't done. I want an insurance from the engineers or whoever's responsible that I won't get the water running down into my property from the firehouse. I spent $20,000 to fix my basement. I put in three driveways. I need a fourth one, because it's cracking from south to north, the driveway again. I'm spending a lot of my own money to try and preserve my own home. I want some kind of security that this isn't going to have an impact on my home and myself, the property. I was told they were going to terrace the other property, they were going to do this, they were going to pour water drinks. It never happened when they put the other house in. I was told when the Board of Ed, they were going to have free flow there. They got 15 or 18 trucks there, and they paved it, and the water is running off from there also. So I've been a little deceived through the years living there, and that's what concerns me. I want an insure, an insurance by the engineers that my property will be safe from water running down because of the grading of the property of the fire department.
I can give a little bit of testimony on that. As I said before, a lot of this runoff will now be collected into a pipe system and tied into the inlet on Downey Court, but there is, this property is just higher. It runs that way. It always has. There will now be less runoff going in this direction, but there's not going to be no runoff going in that direction.
Is there a curb to the, to the parking lot so that it will capture any of the runoff that would go into that parking lot?
The parking lot is graded so that it goes into this inlet. I can refer to sheet four of eight in our plan set to show the grading.
Is there curbing, the question?
Oh, there's curbing. I'm sorry, I didn't, I thought you said curve. Curbing, yes. There's curbing, yes. This will contain it and bring it into this inlet, yes.
So you would, you would put your, your engineering degree and say, indeed, by having this curbing there with that parking lot, that a substantial amount of the water that would normally flow towards the next property is going to be caught and redirected?
Absolutely. The building right now is at about a little less than 50 feet from the property. We're now going to be 75 feet, so what we're cutting off here, this, this all used to go in this direction, so now half of that will be going to the north in this direction. Like I said, it's not that there's nothing. All these are contours that are going in this direction. But all of this will now be contained where it used to just free flow right from the whole back of the building, right off the property. So we are about cutting it in half, so.
Could you potentially, that, that area that's not parking lot?
This area in here?
What is it, grass?
It'll be grass implanted. We're actually putting in a good landscape buffer in here now, too. So as far as looking at the parking lot from the backyard, this will have a nice green planting along.
And the wetlands are what, north?
The wetlands are here. This line right here is the wetlands, and this is the buffer, so we can't.
Could you grade that towards the wetlands?
It kind of is. There's a little bit of an angle point in here, so part of this goes that way, part of it. I, I mean, we could probably look at maybe trying to swale something a little bit this direction, so that way, you know, actually, I think that may not be too bad of an idea. Bring this up a little bit and try to swale it and kind of get it to come towards the wetlands a little bit that way. So that way, what, even what does runoff past the curb line.
It's pushing towards the wetlands.
It would hopefully try to get in this direction a little bit, as much as possible. I think maybe right at the bottom there.
If you could, if you could do that reasonably.
Yeah.
I think that would be an awesome thing.
It absolutely looks possible in here, looking at the grades that we have and the amount of distance between contours. I could tighten this up a little bit and, you know, kind of, I don't know, swell these out is, sounds like a weird term, but if you kind of make this U-shaped on these contours, it makes that turn into a dip where then Mr. Chindel's property would be, you know, we would have a little low spot before it goes back to his for a high spot and then kind of bring it over here to the east. You have a lake back here?
No. You're putting a gully in there, you're saying, it's going to turn into be like a little lake here.
Well, it would still be directed to the east, you know, trying to bring it this way to the east.
Towards the wetlands, that would be.
Regardless of where it is, that gets flooded now. My lawn on that side of my house is like a lake when we get any kind of amount of rain.
You could also look into some yard drains along the property line there and tie it into your proposed inlet.
Yes.
As well. Kind of pull some of the water away.
Yes.
You're saying yes. Is that what your proposal would be to adjust that, correct?
Inlets can be added here, especially because there's an inlet right here that we could tie into with the system, so, yeah.
Now, that, that water that runs from there or the rain or whatever it is that runs into them drain, it goes into the sewer system, right?
It goes into the, yes, the stormwater sewer system.
If I wanted to put my drain pipes from my house out there, that's illegal. Why, why are we doing this here now? Why are we running that into the sewer when I can't run?
No, it's, it's not going into the sewer.
Not, not the sanitary sewer.
It's going into the storm drain.
Yeah.
Not the sewer line.
Why can't I run mine, Mike, into the storm drain?
You can.
You could.
I could?
Yes.
Into the storm drain, yes, not into the sewer line.
I was always told you can't do that.
You can't run it into your, your sewer line?
No, the storm, the storm. Out to the street into the storm, you know.
You can't do that.
You can.
You can. It's frowned upon to have a direct connection from a roof to a storm drain. The current thinking is they'd rather have it go over the lawn, but it's not illegal.
Thank you. I never knew that. I was under the impression, I've been told by other people that that was against the law.
It is, in fact, against the law to go into what people call the sewer, which is your sanitary, your plumbing system.
Yeah, I understand, yes, yes.
That's for sure.
I'm talking about running it out to the street into the sewer, you know, I call it the sewers, the drains, the water drains.
If you did that, it requires a township road opening permit, and you could discuss with the township engineer.
Yeah, yeah, well, I'm just saying, you know.
Yeah, you can give us some guidance on that.
That's a problem. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention. Thank you for your time. Thank you to the firemen and to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certainly, the swale is something that we've thoroughly considered the problems of implementing. We'll take very seriously what you have, those inlets.
I'm, I'm sure that we'll work, that everybody will work with the township engineer in making sure that the, the most reasonable possible plan is implemented.
That's fine.
That reduces their, reduces their current problem, but doesn't necessarily get rid of.
That is the hope. A pair of points, and if you have the opportunity, take those.
Any other questions of the engineer at this time? Hearing and seeing none. Any other members of the public have any questions of the engineer at this time? Hearing and. I would like to now have you bring up your planner.
I would like to reintroduce this, if possible. You were qualified earlier. I just want to have some very, very interesting things to do. Do you believe, Mr. Norwood, ordinance that we're seeing?
You please use the microphone.
I'm sorry, sorry, Nora. I believe that you identified three of them?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And do you believe that there is a justification for the deviations that are being sought tonight?
I do believe there are justification, yes.
Okay. And would you agree with me that, that both the, I'll say the bulk deviations, not including the impervious or the lot coverage, but those are actually better deviations than what currently exists?
That's correct. We will actually be improving upon the existing nonconformity by having a greater front setback, although it's still not compliant.
Okay, so we're minimizing the noncompliance?
Yes. And the building coverage is, like I said, 0.1% of an increase, and it's, you know, all just roof lines and whatnot, but in essence, the building is almost the same exact size. It's the lot coverage, that's the, about 9.1% of an increase, so.
Okay, and you did testify earlier that we're implementing certain drainage features to try and minimize that.
Yes.
And do you believe that the plan is advanced, would advance the general welfare and the public good of the community?
I do, yes.
And it would provide necessary infrastructure for fire matic operations?
Absolutely, yes.
And do you also, would you agree with me that it would actually encourage the appropriate expenditure of public funds, which is going to be sourced for this project, to an efficient expenditure of those funds and appropriate expenditure of those funds?
Yes, I do. I think this is going to give a new state-of-the-art facility for the residents that it serves, and it will be an appropriate expenditure.
Okay, and you believe that this is an appropriate location?
Speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry, Nora. You believe that this is an appropriate location for, and the, the variances being requested are appropriate for this location and for this particular use, which is for the public good?
Yes, I do.
And do you believe that this is a better visual alternative even for adjoining neighbors than what currently exists?
Yes, this will aesthetically be an improvement from the existing building that's there, which is starting to look a little aged and, you know, was built in 1983, so this will be a, quite a big improvement aesthetically.
And would you agree with me with the, the further, I guess, relocation of the building to the front of the property? There's a greater setback now for the, the adjoining rear property owner?
Yes, we've increased the rear setback by, like I said, about 25, I think it's 27 and change feet. We also, I didn't mention this before, had an existing nonconforming side, which will now be conforming. Increased the front setback here, and although the building is moving closer here, it, the benefits of the rear is, and it's still compliant by all means, but much better in this location.
Okay. And do you believe that, in your opinion, it, the benefits of the variances where the, I suppose, the ordinance violations are outweigh the detriments that are associated with what's being requested?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Those are your questions?
That's it.
Are there any questions from members of the board of this planning testimony at this time? Do you have any questions of the planner at this time?
No, no questions or objections to the testimony, certainly. I believe there merits for the deviations that have been proposed, as testified to, and the plan has been further refined tonight. I guess I also question, because this is a courtesy review, if the board actually has to formally grant relief versus acknowledge the relief.
I think we, I think we have to simply find that it's consistent with the master plan. plan.
Right, and make any recommendations, that's my understanding.
Okay.
It's the testimony.
Sure. Do you have any questions of this witness on this testimony?
No.
All right, are there any members of the public that have any questions of the planner on her testimony at this time? Hearing and...
Should I be a best beginning come up that's gonna change anything?
Well, you have to ask questions on the planning testimony, which is different than the engineering testimony, since you've got an architect coming up. I'm not sure who this one is. Do you have a question of the planner on the planning testimony she just gave?
Uh, no, I do not. I thought it was the architect.
Not, not yet, no.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I, I was, I did not make myself clear.
I'm having a problem here, most of you aren't speaking even a microphone.
I'm probably the worst file eater of them, so I feel like I'm on top of this thing.
All right.
All right, thank you very much, I have no further questions unless...
Hearing and seeing none from our board, if you could bring up your next, next witness.
The next witness I'd like to call is Robert Conley.
He's raising his right hand, sir, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, how have you got?
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please, please spell your last name.
Robbie Conley, C-O-N-L-E-Y, of Robbie Conley Architect, which is 596 Glassbar Road, Woodbury Heights, New Jersey.
Okay, Mr. Conley, could you, for the benefit of the board, provide them with your educational credentials, licensing, and experience, especially in this field?
I'm a graduate of Drexel University, I've been a licensed architect now for 24 years, 25 years. I have my own firm for 20 years, and I'm also licensed in the state of Pennsylvania, state of Delaware, and state of Florida, and I've actually testified and presented this board before on the other firehouse project.
Okay, and you were accepted as a...
Yes.
...architect at that point in time?
Any questions by members of the board?
Mr. Conley, given that there are some concerns over the, I guess, the structural issues and the soils and things of that nature, that has, I assume, driven some of your design concerns?
Yes. Okay. If, if I could on that subject, we've actually been working with the fire district since we did the last building, which was about 10, 12 years ago, I believe, and we've been looking at different ways of being able to add on to this building, and we've had multiple structural analysis done. Approximately two years ago, we had multiple soil tests done, soil borings, we did ground penetrating radar to look at the soils that are down there and try to see what is below grade. And what we've come up with is that what you have there is you have an underlying sloped soil that is good. And what has happened is, when they built the building in the 1980s, that they did bring in fill and they did not compact that fill properly, or they brought in improper fill. And this was the problem with the settlement that we're getting there now. What we've done is, we moved the fort, the building forward closer to Old Bloomfield Pike, where we're actually higher on that slope of good soil, and we don't have to dig down as far to get to the good soil, also moving it away from the residence property, so therefore we can get down to virgin soil that was not disturbed in the old construction and get down to that level and put a nice solid structure down there and build up from that location.
Okay. And could you, for the benefit of the board and the public, demonstrate what the architectural schematic is that's being proposed?
Sure.
Quick question, just on the soil and moving the building forward. So is that bad soil still gonna be there?
The, the bad soil is not gonna be underneath of the building.
But it'll be under the parking lot?
No, under the parking lot, that soil will be compacted and will be properly, once we demo the old building and get the existing building out of there, that whole site will be compacted.
Okay.
And filled properly and compacted as need be. Then we'll dig down to the footing location where we need to be and build up from there. So this back area here, where the building actually kind of comes in like this, the existing building, this area here will have to be refilled with proper fill and refilled properly, and then moving forward, it'll be filled with structural fill. So it's two different types of fills, but yes, it will be properly filled. So quickly, we'll go through the design of the building, then we'll get to the looks of the building. You have the four bays here where the vehicles will pull out, we have the separation that's already been talked about between the public area and the private area for the fire company, so those vehicles aren't crossing spaces like they currently are now. We're trying to keep the public here, the first responders will use mostly the side parking and the back parking, enter through the building from the rear, get their gear on, load up to the trucks from the back, and pull out the front. Basically, we're trying to keep the circulation and that's a safety issue. So the public is here, the firefighters are here and here, they come around, they come in through here, they get off their gear, they get on the trucks and they pull out. So that kind of cuts the public and the emergency responders and keeps them separate.
You're, you're looking at another sheet from the application?
Yes.
If you could just identify the sheet.
This is A1, A1 from the architectural room. The public entrance will be here, right off of that new parking lot, come in here, there's radio room, stairs and an elevator to get to the second floor. This is the commissioner's office here, where they meet and where they have most of their meetings. This is toilet room, showers, bunk rooms, and this is all other areas for the fire department operations back here. Gear room, decontamination room, and this will be all the mechanicals and everything will be back in this far corner. You come up to the second floor, there's a larger meeting room here, normally the commissioner's meetings don't have a whole lot of visitors, so they would be able to hold the meetings down on this lower level. If they do have something where they need to have more people, they can move it up to the second floor, where there's a training room and they'd be able to meet in that training room. Elevator and the stairwell is up there, there is a toilet room here, a small kitchen area, and across the back is meetings, conference room, officers' rooms, and those sort of things. Off of the back is an open stairwell and a deck for the egress out of the building. And that will be covered also. Any questions on the floor plans before we go to bed?
Why don't you go through it?
And then the look of the building, the front of the building, we have some dormers up here, though there's not a second floor over top of this, we're putting them on for aesthetics. This portion of the building here is the two-story, you can see that that's almost, that's only a little bit higher than what the engine bays are, while the engine bays have to be that tall because of the trucks that are in there. So basically, this is 18 foot on this side and the, the two-story isn't that much higher. We have the, the aesthetics of the building is pretty much a block building, similar to the one over on Beverwick Road, it'll be different color materials, but it'll be the similar architectural block on the outside, possibly two different colors going up and then the shingle roof on top. And this is the side from Beverwick, or from Downey Court, is this side, this is the side, or this side, I'm sorry, this is the side that will be facing the Board of Education, this is the side that will be facing Downey Court, and this is the back of the building.
I have no further questions.
Have members of the board have questions on the architect at this time?
I do.
Mr. DePaulitano?
Thank you for that testimony. How, how high are the, the bay doors?
The bay doors are 14 feet high.
And that, that accounts for all heights of all future purchase of different trucks and stuff we might purchase in matter trucks?
Yeah, basically, the state of New Jersey's 13 foot six is the maximum height, so we put the doors up 14 foot to give them a couple extra inches.
Thank you, Jim.
Other members of the board have questions of this testimony of the architect? Do any of our professionals have questions of the architect?
Just one quick one, you know, looking at the floor plan, will you have space for, you know, rentals or anything like that for use by the public?
I'm sorry, space for...
Will, will there be any rental space in the building? I know there's only really a small, you know, meeting room on the second floor, will that be available to the public or for parties or anything?
No, no. It's all for the, just the fire department use only.
The members of the public that have questions of the architect on his testimony at this time?
I want to be a thorn in the side of the fire department, whether it is what I want.
Well, if you bring up important facts, we need to know them.
I'm, I'm wondering why they need a second floor now?
I thought they made that clear, but they didn't.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, it's fine that they want to put it in, but why do they need that? They're making the building bigger on the first floor, why isn't that substantial for them to function as they want it to? That they gotta go up a second floor and put that extra weight on that property?
Yes, the, the first floor of the building is minimally larger than the existing building, and the needs that they have, the office spaces that are required and the further needs of what the fire service has today, increases the footprint and the space that they need to have. For instance, the existing building doesn't have a decontamination area or a laundry area, this current, the new building will have a decontamination area and a laundry area. It will also have an area for them to maintain their air bottles, which is basically the, the air that they breathe when they go inside of a burning building. This new building will have a, a location for them to maintain and keep that apparatus and that self-contained breathing apparatus up to today's requirements and keep it in good service. They also have a maintenance area, we also have a, a larger utility space in this building that is required by today's needs. Currently, they have one office in the existing firehouse. The new building will have multiple offices in there that they need for all the paperwork and everything that's required today that wasn't required back in the 1980s.
Also, would it be, does this new firehouse actually provide different facilities for both men and women?
Yes, it does, and that, very good.
And those different facilities include various bunk rooms for both men and women separately, as well as different type of...
Locker, showers, toilet facilities and all of that for both men and women.
I don't know why here, but maybe someone from the fire department can explain to me, they have an auxiliary fire building, fire building on South Beverick Road is the auxiliary District 5. Do they have them same facilities in the other building that they're planning on putting here? Because why the dual, if at all possible, why the dual need?
See, I, I did the other building and I've done studies and I've been working with the fire district for many years now. Basically, you need to have certain facilities at each fire station, that's a substation, the other one is, excuse me, that's their second station. So basically, you have two firehouses, and they both have certain needs and certain requirements. This is where the fire commissioners are, so that's why we have the fire commissioner's office here and the public meeting rooms are here. They're not up on the station at Beverick Road.
Do you mean they don't have them facilities on Beverick Road?
They don't have, the commissioner's office is not at Beverick Road.
All right, the commissioner's office, what about all the other facilities that you're looking to put on the second floor? They don't have that on South Beverick Road?
No, they do, they do not. They do not have all those facilities on South Beverick Road.
Does that mean now that they're gonna have to change the one on South Beverick Road to comply with this new one here now?
No, because you have, basically, you have some facilities at one station and some facilities at the other station and some facilities at both stations. The facilities that they have at both stations are offices and spaces that are required at both stations. This is more of the commissioner's office and the headquarters building per se. The other station, Station 2, is basically just more of a substation or a secondary fire station. They have some training facilities there, but not tra, not a large training room like they will have here, they have the larger training room here, the smaller training room at the other station.
Because I'm looking at that and also thinking of the extras that you included in that blueprint, what is gonna cause the taxpayers a part, if any, also?
Just to be correct, it would be people within the District 5.
I understand that, I understand that, but I think the taxpayers are...
Yeah.
Okay.
And, and there will be appropriate voting for that?
Unfortunately, like the people attending here today, they don't get involved, they don't want to know anything, and then they complain later on.
Do you have any other questions of the architect?
No, I don't, thank you for your patience with me and giving me the option.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if I ask another question?
Sure.
I mean, this may have been a better question for the engineer or the planner. The, the existing building, you've been working with it, does, does it have roof drains that go into pipes or is it basically, does the flow daylight off the existing building?
They go in, everything goes down underground currently, nothing...
Okay, so that's not a betterment, that's what I was...
No, no.
Okay, thank you.
No, putting this into the storm drainage is the same as what the other was.
Okay, that's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Math. My counselor, I don't see any other members of the public that wish to ask questions at this time.
And Mr. Chairman, that really is the sum of all my witnesses at this point in time. I'd just note for the benefit of the record that we did receive a Highlands exemption.
A Highlands exception was received, okay. Is there any other members of the public, not public, but of the board that have any questions on this case, Mr. Donakem?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I think this would best apply to the engineer. As the construction is underway, what will you be doing to mitigate potential drainage issues during construction?
As required, we'd be putting in silt fence, obviously around the perimeter to avoid, I think actually this one would probably qualify for potentially super silt fence, which is where you have the snow slopes, to avoid any runoff or erosion going off the site. Inlet protection around all the inlets, any temporary vegetative standards, we're gonna have to meet the soil district standards.
I would just want to make sure that while the construction is underway, that the mitigation is gonna be appropriate so that this gentleman's property isn't compromised during that time.
Yes, that will be required.
Mr. Chairman, what's the timeframe from demolition to finishing and reopening?
Um, we're looking at probably about 14 months of construction from the start of demolition to completion, depending on weather.
Of course. Thank you.
And, and, yes, and also availability of materials, that's the new thing.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mealy?
During the construction of the new building, where will the fire equipment be kept as an onsite? Will it be covered with tarps? I mean, it'll be outside.
We're working on a temporary housing, we're, we're looking to actually locate it somewhere by Arlington Plaza, so be erect in a temporary building there for, you know, for our use.
So the equipment will be close enough...
Yes, sir.
...to your new building that you could cover any area?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other members of the board, our professionals?
About that temporary, if you know any more details, it's better to get it on now, get it approved now, so that when you come for the zoning permit, I, I don't have to say no. So if you have any detail of that, that would be great to have on record now, because that's a different property and I'm, I'm restricted in what I can give it, so if you know size of the structure, height of the structure, possibly where it's gonna go, give me an idea so that, that it's not a separate.
I'll come and see you tomorrow.
Any other questions of our board members here? All right, I'm gonna ask at this time if there's any member of the public that wishes to speak on this application at this time. This is your time, chance to give a, a general discussion and say what you wish to say, rather than just asking questions. Now, for this, you have to be sworn in.
He's raising his right hand, sir, do you swear affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I certainly do.
Please state your name, spell your last, and provide us with your address, please.
My name is Vincent Schindel, S-C-H-I-N-D-E-L.
And your address, sir?
3 FX Downey Court. I have a few statements I'd like to make, if I may, at this time...
Yes.
...with the whole picture here. I definitely want to thank the firemen again for the service they do to the town. I want them to know I'm not anti-firemen. They're volunteers, I also want them to know that I've done a lot of volunteer work in my life too. I know it got nothing to do with the building here. I've been volunteering for 60 years of my life for things I think that are good for Some of the things that I have written down here have been addressed to... down here have been addressed to a degree. My problem is, and I'm going to make a recommendation that may sound crazy, but I think it would be in the best interest of the fire department itself. If they were able to get a different location right across Old Bloomfield Ave, somehow work something out, to get a new piece of property there, leave the current building up as it stays now, until they build a new one, if at all possible, across the street somewhere, where it wouldn't create a problem for the residential people living behind the current firehouse. They could leave the building up, leave their fire engines in there, till they put a new building up, and then when the new building is finished, tear the old building down, move the equipment, and maybe the town can buy that property for open space. And it would eliminate a lot of problems for all of us. I don't think that's a problem that's not possible to be done. And it would beautify, believe it or not, it would make the opposite side of the street more beautifying and be easier. They have a bigger piece of property there if they could do it. I believe there's an ex-commissioner lives there. He may be a current one, and I stand to be corrected if I'm wrong.
Somebody said current.
Oh, all right. Okay, fine, current. Then maybe they could work something out with him. To put the building up there, it would satisfy everybody, make life easy for everyone. The fire department, all the neighbors on FX Downey Court. And I leave you with that as a thought and good faith and good suggestion for everybody concerned in this matter. I'd hate to think that they have to build a new fire, a new firehouse in another 15, 20 years on the current side. I leave you with that. Thank you for your time and attention and your consideration of whatever you're doing. Thank all of you. Thank all the firemen behind me. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing us your concerns. Counselor?
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing further. I ask with the board of the board on the application.
All right. Are there any items that still need to be covered at this time? Is everything... Is there anybody on the board that wishes to have a discussion of this? I think that closes the evidentiary portion of the tonight's proceedings. Is there anybody that would like to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Chairman, what kind of motion are we looking at? This is, we need to, basically, recommendation that we find this consistent with our master plan?
I believe that we, the objective is to find that it was consistent with the master plan and that the appropriate variances are reasonable within the context of the application.
Okay. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we prepare a memorandum finding that this application is consistent with our master plan, and that the bulk variance relief that will be present are actually being a betterment or an improvement on the lot, and that we make certain recommendations with that, such as...
Well, if they work with the engineers...
That they work with the engineers to provide improved drainage swale along the back property line, investigate a seepage pit for the roof runoff leads, and make some minor changes to sidewalks and curbing. That's discussed in the meeting.
Do I hear a second on that?
Second, Bealy.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
DePiero.
Yes.
Bealy.
Yes.
Math.
Yes.
DePaulitano.
Yes.
Denzel.
Yes.
Bealy.
Yes.
Don Akin.
Yes.
Dindemar.
Yes.
Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for your patience and your understanding.
Thank you very much. Thank the participants from the public. And I thank everybody here for their service. Currents are in the past. Is there anything else we need to have...
Nothing more.
...brought to the attention of the board tonight? Hearing and seeing none. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second? Anybody opposed? So water. I was definitely informed by the last...